Good evening and welcome to the November 3rd Lawrence City Commission Meeting. First item on the agenda will be the consent agenda since we have no proclamations this evening. So all matters listed on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion, will be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for further consideration? Any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none, we need to add to the consent agenda claims from 185 vendors in the amount of $1,349.45. So with the addition of the claims, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes 3-0. We, as everybody can tell, we're missing a couple folks tonight. Don't be concerned. We have Vice Mayor Soden and Commissioner Herbert are at the National League of Cities Conference in Nashville, so they will be back next week. So the three of us are moving ahead with things. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. Diane.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. A couple of items to highlight for you this evening. You have the October sales tax report and the September financial report there for you. On the sales tax, the good news is that we are 4% over the, in sales tax this year to date, over last year's collections, but that is slightly behind our amended budget figure that called for 5%. So we continue to monitor that. And then, as you can see in the September financial report, we track various revenues and where we are year-to-date on those two. So overall, I think we're looking fairly good for this year as we look to close out the year. We also have an update for you on the Osdale Road water main replacement project. So this will be a project along Osdale between 22nd and 19th Street. This is a 1955 piece of infrastructure that we are replacing. There have been some issues, some line breaks and things of that sort with that particular line. And also, we have been discussing with KU the impact of the KU Central District, and so we are looking to replace the water line and then while we're doing that, to enlarge it in preparation for that particular project. We anticipate that that would be installed on the west side of Osdale and take about three months to construct. There's going to be some closures, one block at a time that would be just during the day, but it would be open in the evening. And in case you have any additional questions on that, we do have Mike Lawless, our Deputy Director of Utilities here this evening, who can answer those as well. We wanted to let you know, we did conduct an employee survey in the month of August, and we had very good participation from our employees. Almost 70% of the city's workforce participated in the survey, so I think it's a very good reflection of the general thoughts of the employees. The last one we did was in 2008, and some of the notable things, we did have quite a market increase in employee satisfaction from the last time that the survey was conducted, which I think is a good indication. You know, 2008 was a difficult year. It was really the feel of the recession and that kind of thing, and I think employees were feeling that in 2008. So it's good that we have made some improvements from that time. Then there's some things that I think we're doing well in, and there's a memo that is from me that I sent out to city employees with just some of my observations about the report. I do think that we continue to need to pay attention to resources. There were comments about facilities from staff members, and then compensation, of course, continues to be of interest along with the benefits. But I know many employees were very appreciative of the support that the commission had in all of those things in the last budget process for next year's budget. So anyway, we plan to continue to talk with you all about some of those needs, particularly equipment and facilities, in future budgets. We also wanted to announce a landmark in terms of our Twitter account and our social media efforts, thanks to a number of individuals in this room that work on the social media and our other communications outreach. We reached 10,000 followers, which in the Twitter world is a very substantial number and a good milestone. So we get a lot of buzz out there on any number of subjects. I know that the picture that was taken of the train in Watson Park with the Royals got a lot of retweets and also on Facebook on both of those. So those are kind of fun things and good messages to get out. We also would like to take the opportunity to have staff brief you here a bit on the New Hampshire Water Line Project. This is a new water line that's being installed along New Hampshire as it relates to the construction that's being undertaken with the new apartment building there at 9th and New Hampshire. So I believe Mark Teal is going to provide a little overview on some of that work. Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. October 2014, initial right-of-way permit was issued for this project. During that time, there was discussion about when the water line piece of the project would take place. There was public meetings held onsite with adjacent property owners. There was a big concern from the farmer's market about doing the water line through the summer, and so there was an agreement made to hold off on doing the water line portion until the farmer's market would have concluded, which it will here. November 21st is their last Saturday. And so the contractor asked the city if they could start consideration for doing the water line project on New Hampshire in the 800 block in New Hampshire. So they submitted a plan to do it in two phases. The south half, close New Hampshire half at a time, the south half first, and then the second, the north half second. We met with them, and then we had a public meeting with as many property adjacent businesses and property owners as we could last Friday. During that discussion, we determined that it would be better if we just did the Phase 1, which started this Monday, would be completed by November 16th and then leave, reopen the street to its prior configuration of one-way traffic, north and south, until after the first of the year. So that work started on Monday. The contractor subsequently has met with our utilities department and with a plan to do that a little bit differently, and so they presented that to us today. Their plan is what you see up here on the overhead. They want to continue and finish with Phase 1, and they will be done with that by November 16th. In its current configuration, the south half of the 800 block in New Hampshire is closed. The access to both parking lots on the east and west side, and the farmer's market lot, which is on the east side of New Hampshire, currently accessible from the north off of 8th Street. When they finish this phase, they'll go to Phase 2, they're proposing to go to Phase 2, which would pull the fence back on the south half to its configuration prior to Monday, which would allow two-way traffic in the southern half of that block. And then they would fence off the water line portion of the project on the north half, which would allow traffic to travel northbound in its normal lane in that north half of that block. So, that's a lot of blocks and halves and so forth. After they finish Phase 1, they're asking to immediately proceed with Phase 2, which will allow them to, allow traffic to pass through that block northbound. Access to both parking lots will be continued to be maintained, and access to the west parking lot will be able to be obtained from 9th Street, and vehicles can come to that from the north, exit and go north on New Hampshire, but also can exit the parking lot and head south back towards 9th Street. So I think that's an improvement over the original plan that they asked for, to close it in two phases. The difference is they will need to have that one-lane northbound configuration through November 30th, so there's that consideration through the Thanksgiving hours. So next steps for the city will be to require a contractor to revisit all those property owners. Back in October of 2014, we established a four-page notification list, people that were at the meeting and other businesses, business owners in that proximity of the project. So tomorrow, they'll have to send out notice of this plan. We'll wait to see if we get any, what kind of feedback we get from those property owners and businesses. And then we would also require them to man the project the entire time, that they have any disruption to New Hampshire other than the two-lane, you know, until they get it back to the two-lane configuration, which would mean, obviously, they'll need to work just about every day but Thanksgiving. And that's what the city's planning to do for direction on this. And I'll stand for questions. Mike Lawless is here, and Scott Fuehens with Utilities is also here, if you have questions related to the actual water line.
Just so both of you know that I did have concern about, you know, the street being shut down during the holiday season, and if it could be done by Thanksgiving, I thought it, you know, then we'd go ahead and do it in the two phases, as was presented. You know, I did visit with the contractor today. He did, you know, it probably makes a little bit more sense if they get in and out and they're done by the 30th. My main concern was, was from the 25th to the 30th. You know, I know everybody's going to be off, and I don't want to see that fence, you know, up and blocking trade because it is an awfully big time, especially as we talked about sales tax a few minutes ago. So, you know, this is not the time to be blocking access anywhere. So that was my main concern, just so, so that both of you know, and staff knows also. So anyway, you know, my suggestion is if we do have a plan in place, notifying everybody, if there is big concern, then I think it has to come back to us for, you know, final decision, if that's the direction of the commission. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for doing your work on that, too. Okay, questions of Diane on the city manager's report? Okay, the Osdale Water Line, we've got a 1955 water line. We've had leaks on October 8th and 9th of this year, right? So sometimes we have projects that may not be at the top of the list, but they can move up quickly when we start seeing things like this, right?
That is correct. I'll let Mike address that a little more.
I was going to say, that's correct. That's one of the nice things about being able to have our in-house crews, is that we can mobilize as we finish projects and move to others fairly quickly. And in this particular case, it's been one that's been on our list for a while, and, you know, with those recent breaks that we had, and have just a couple pictures from the... Oops. Hold on. So this is the piece of 1955 pipe that we had the break in, and if you look in the picture here, you can see on the inside the crack, and then basically that crack took off and went towards the top of the screen there. The other thing that's interesting is this pipe is, it's actually a bolted flanged pipe, so it's a much more rigid pipe than what we put in today, not only because it's cast iron, but today we use push joint pipe where we actually have a bell and spigot. It has gaskets in there, and that joint is flexible and can move, where in this particular kind of a joint, it's bolted together, and so the joint has no way to move, so the only thing that can move is the pipe. And in this particular case, and several instances along here, along Osdale, that's exactly what we have. So if you look, this was where the break started in that previous picture, and if you can see, we had to remove about a 10-foot piece of pipe, and in that 10-foot piece of pipe, we had two other repair clamps already there. And so we actually cut that piece of pipe out, put a new piece in, and then we have clamps on either end. Again, we've removed one of the hard joints, and we've added a little bit of flexibility in the connections that we have on the end of that. But if all the pipe is set up with that same kind of joint, just like the rest of the pipe along there, at some point, it's going to fail as it moves, as we, as it dries or gets cold and the soil pulls away from that, any kind of movement in that, it's not allowed in that joint. And so wherever there's a weak spot in the pipe, we'll have, you know, we have the ability to have additional brakes. And so when we looked at this, you know, with the KU work that's coming up, we felt like if we could get in and get our part done before the KU project ever started, we'd be set up so that whatever happens on 19th Street, we have a main there that's in good shape and able to be connected to, and that we're confident isn't going to have any more brakes in it like we've had here. I understand, you know, I realize there's pipe to the south of 22nd Street, it needs to be repaired, and the same kind of pipe that we have here, but we're trying to do that in conjunction with the stormwater project at 23rd and Osdale, so that we don't put something in and then have to remove it again. We like to do it once and be done with it. But that piece is still in our list, and we know it needs to be done. It's just, we think it works better when we do the stormwater project so that we don't design it with a conflict or something that has to be moved in the future.
You've been working on the east-west lines in that neighborhood, right?
Yeah, we've done quite a few of the lines. There's still some of the cul-de-sacs that go to the west on 20th Terrace and maybe 19th Terrace, although I think we've done that one. But there's a couple of those cul-de-sacs that just dead-end that, or that same vintage of pipe that we know need to be replaced, and those are things that we look at and try to figure out how to fit them in, when to fit them in. But we've done, I think, a pretty good job of trying to go down a lot of those numbered streets going east and west to make the, to, you know, to update those pipes.
So you're going to try to hit the gap between the sidewalk and the street for most of this work?
That's correct. There's a couple of spots, or a spot there where, between 21st Terrace and 21st Street, where as we go north, we've got sanitary sewer that runs in that area, as well as storm sewer on the street itself. So in that area, we'll have to pull off and actually go in the street for maybe half a block to three-quarters of a block until we get across 21st Street, and then we can jump back in between the curb and the sidewalk area.
So there's only a sidewalk on the west side of the street there, and there's a grade school down towards 23rd Street?
Correct. We've had conversations with the grade school, as well as transit, about the project and either how we're going to do traffic, or how we'll make sure that we find a way to get the kids to the school, because that was their biggest concern, was a lot of people use that, and that they didn't want that to be a hindrance for kids to get to school. And so one of the things that we'll have to do is make sure that we have a path that's safe for the kids to walk on.
Right.
Will you be trenching that in or boring it in?
We'll be trenching it in. It'll be open cut, but, and, you know, that's one of the reasons why we have to do the, what we've set up as basically daily road closures of a block at a time, is because it's in the right-of-way, we have to use flowable fill. And so all the material that we pull out, we have to haul away and dump, and so we'll have a backhoe or the mini-hoe, and then a dump truck in order to pull that material out and get it away. And so rather than try to fight traffic, it's easier just for that period of the day, we would close it from 7:00 to 5:30 while our workday is, and then at the end of the day, we'll clean up and open the road to traffic.
Everybody will have total access to their homes in and out?
Yeah, we'll have, you know, driveways, we have street plates that as we cut across the driveway, and then typically what we'll do is we'll pour half the driveway with a street plate on the other half. Once the concrete is cured, we'll come back, they can use the new piece of concrete, and then we'll pour the second half.
I did notice that you're going to be notifying residents along the route three weeks prior to the deal?
Yeah.
Just looking at the calendar, we're right there, right?
Right. Typically, two to three weeks ahead of a project like this, we'll go flyer the area and let them know what the project's about, who the contacts are, who the project manager is that'll be out onsite that they can get hold of, who we can get hold of in the office. And if we do it much beyond that three-week period, people kind of forget when we show up, and they're kind of surprised by it, so we like to be in that two-to-three-week period before we start.
And one of the things that I might suggest, and I don't know if you do these, but because of the access, I mean, everybody uses a sidewalk. I mean, it's from little kids on up.
Right.
And to adults, one of the things that we may want to do is talk to the neighborhood. I mean, they meet all the time, I think, don't they? Regularly? Never. But, you know, at least have a meeting to talk about this thing, because, you know, I couldn't help but overhear Jim, you know, talking about some of the issues and concerns that they may have, that that might be something that we want to do.
We can certainly do that.
Within that three-week period, just take the time to do it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Let me know as soon as you can when you're going to schedule that.
Okay, yeah, I think part of it'll be just getting a room, maybe at the school or something like that, so.
With a fire station?
Give us a couple days to talk with the school.
We've got the fire station.
We've got the fire station, too.
Fire station, yeah.
So.
It's comfy.
Yeah, there you go.
One thing about these breaks, there were two different breaks on those two different days, right?
Correct.
There was one between 20th and 20th Terrace, and one between 21st Street and 21st Terrace?
Correct.
So within two days, there were two breaks on this line?
Right, and then we had another one on 20th Terrace on the cul-de-sac itself.
Okay.
So I think all of those, I think one of the, the one on the cul-de-sac was kind of coincident with, I don't know if it was the first one or the second one, do you remember?
Second.
It was the second one. And so even though it kind of looked like there were two on Osdale, there was a third one that was probably the same kind of an issue, it just happened on the side street rather than on Osdale.
I appreciate you fixing them, because I got my water back.
I think that's a big thing, you know, Michael and his staff will set up time for everybody to come talk and see what they're doing. One of the things that's important is, just like Stuart says, you know, it's better to get that pipe in the ground now, you know, even before it's broken, because once it breaks, it's no fun for everybody, so let's get it and get it done right, and get all your questions answered in this thing, okay?
Right.
Fair enough.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on the city manager's report?
Were they here to talk?
They could do general public comment.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that. Okay. Okay, Diane, thank you. There was one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I'll just do it now. You know, with all the celebrating that was going on today in Kansas City, it's kind of quiet, you know, here for a little bit. But I do know Sunday night, you know, that we did have major celebration time around the community, and, you know, just, you know, special hats off to our police department, you know, and the work that they did. I know that a lot of folks had a great time, and, you know, just watching, you know, from afar at this time. But, you know, hearing comments and stuff from folks that really enjoy themselves and just having a good time in downtown, and, you know, there's going to be times when things happen, we understand that. But, you know, just make sure you pass along a special thank you for all the hard work that they do. I mean, this was something to kind of behold, and just kind of, just kind of happen, you know, little party for, I don't know, eight or 10,000, whatever it was. But I know that they did a good job in allowing people to have a good time and still, you know, kept things peaceful, so that's good.
I'll certainly pass that along.
You bet.
Thank you very much. And I know they were busy on so many different events. We had so many things going on this last weekend, so a lot of activities.
Yeah, I mean, they just kept happening, like, you know, one would end and another one start. You know, we went from, you know, football game to 10,000 kids downtown trick-or-treating to, you know, trick-or-treating in the neighborhood, to, you know, the parade on Friday night with homecoming and all the homecoming events. I bet they did have a busy weekend. Okay, thank you very much, Diane.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is general public comment. The public is allowed to speak on any of the items, on any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, state their name and address, and speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. Are there any general public comments this evening? Yes, sir?
Mayor Commissioner, my name is Milton Scott, live at 907 Madeline Lane, and I wish to speak in regards to the city manager candidate process. I was encouraged when I saw and read in the brochure the different qualities that we were looking for, for the ideal candidate, and there were a number of things that were listed there. And two of them I wanted to mention today that I think is critical, too. The first one is that it is important to listen and to connect to people regardless of their background. And the second one was Lawrence values diversity, and the incoming city manager must be culturally competent and appreciate the value that diversity adds. Lawrence is a great city to live in, and we need to make sure that we attract the best possible candidate to fill the position of our next city manager. With that then said, I hope that we have done a lot to encourage or to attract a diverse pool of candidates that represent a wide range of candidates, including minorities and women. We will all benefit if we hire someone who would engage the entire community and who possess a broader wealth of knowledge and experience to help make Lawrence an even better place to live. We are better off, but we are better off both when everyone feels that they have a voice, and when that voice, the first voices of Lawrence are represented by the city commission and our staff. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, thank you very much for those comments. Believe me, you know, we had a lot of help, you know, obviously with that brochure, and I think it speaks to exactly the feelings that each member of this governing body has. So thank you very much for your comments. Other general public comment?
Sure. My name's Paul Boston, live at 2113 Osdale, and I understand the need for replacing the water line. I understand, I own a plumbing company, I understand, now that I've talked with Mike a little bit here, the, how it's more efficient for the city, for the utilities, for the speed of the process to go on the other side of the street. My, I guess my general concern was why this snowballed so quickly without the neighborhood knowing about it? The only reason I found out about it is because Commissioner Bowley here called me and said, "Hey, you really need to come to this meeting Tuesday night because they're putting a water main through your yard." And I said, "What do you mean, they're putting a water main through my yard?" And he said, "Yeah, yeah, they're going to start December 1st." And I was like, "Oh, so I need to go to a meeting." I just, I feel being a property owner, a taxpayer, extremely out of the loop that the whole process was done stamped, signed, delivered without even notification. So, I mean, I understand it's, the main's in bad shape, needs to be replaced. You know, a knock on the door, a phone call, "Hey, guess what? We're putting a main in," you know? And these guys do good work. It'll go smoothly, it'll be efficiently done, and everybody will be happy come April, and we'll all grow our grass back and everything will be fine. But it's just one of those things that I felt, you know, a pretty big, I don't want to use the word bomb because it's just a water main, it's not that big a deal, but you get kind of blindsided by it. So that's, that's all I have. I just, little quick.
Well, we're just, we're going to, thanks for your comments. We're going to take a moment, we're going to step back, and Michael's going to explain the whole deal to everybody, and it's going to work out. You know, here's one of the beauties of water lines, if it's any consolation, I found out about it about four days before you did. It kind of moves ahead in the process like that, so.
Sure, sure, it's, yeah, I mean, you know, it is what it is, so.
Well, we're going to take some time and make sure it's done right, and everybody understands the reasons and needs for it.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, our biggest concern, you know, like I said, we can fix sprinkler systems, we can grow grass again. That's not a lewd point, it's just the safety of the kids, you know? can grow grass again, that's not a lewd point, it's just the safety of the kids, you know? We walk our son to school every day, and there's a gentleman with a disabled child that they walk down the, you know, sidewalk every day to Schwagler, and we walk with him sometimes, and, you know, if that little guy's, he has a walker, and, you know, it's not like he can push that thing through the mud, so, anyway, that's all I have.
We've got to look after one another.
That's right.
We appreciate you doing that, thanks. Other public comment? KT? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We were, my name is KT Walsh, representing only myself, but we were saying if we could only get as many people to vote in the municipal election as we got to vote last night for East Lawrence. I picked a slow meeting, I have some really small housekeeping details to bring up that get talked about a lot among activist people in town, and they might need a little tweaking, and there's no blame at all in what I'm going to say. The, Megan has tried to help me put what they need on the advisory boards at the back of the commission agenda and on the city website, because some of the advisory boards have specific roles, like they need a realtor, or they need a plumber, or a historian, you know, whatever, and apparently our city computer program won't allow us to do that, and so should there be an upgrade at some point, it'd be lovely to be able to put that out there. We encourage people to join those advisory boards, and it'd be great to give them the info right off the bat, so that's one thing. When people send in their applications to be on an advisory board, it would be lovely to have a specific address, because right now it sort of goes up to the fourth floor and maybe to Bobby, it's sort of unclear, and then we hear a month, a couple of months later, did they get it, who did it go to? Eventually it goes to the mayor, and, but there's just been some, a little disconnect, and I'm not sure why, so maybe if there was a specific address that it went to, that's a solution someone's suggested.
KT, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Is there no acknowledgement that the thing, that the application's been received?
That's what I've heard, I haven't experienced that, but that's hearsay.
I think that we can do a better job of that, and so I'll, I'll visit with our staff about, about making sure that we have an acknowledgement that is sent, sent out, because I have heard similar.
Yeah, I think it's important to acknowledge people when they step up, and thank you.
Yeah, it's nobody's fault, and then it's also unclear to a lot of people, the deadline for when we should submit to you for the Tuesday meeting, to make it in your packet or a letter, and it seems like you can get some things in at 4 o'clock Tuesday, or it would just be nice to know, like, when you have to get stuff in, or if it's loose, let us know, you know, just so we know, so maybe if that was front and center. Okay, those are just those things, and then I'm looking forward to Mark Teal's report on snow training, because he is a guy who respects brick streets and stone curbs, and I know one of our city employees invented a special blade just for that, so thank you, Mark.
Diane, do we have a time that is the final time that we'll consider adding items to the agenda?
What we have tried to do is, is have any updates completed by 2 o'clock, so if a citizen sends some correspondence and requests it to be added to the agenda, and it is before 2 o'clock, we try and accommodate that. If it's after 2 o'clock, what we do is we will generally print that and then put it in front of you all so that you can make sure to have that, but it gets a little bit late on Tuesday to be able to do some of those updates, so that's the reason, but I think we can also be a little more clear, and perhaps on the agenda itself, maybe state something about that 2 o'clock deadline and make, make it a little easier for people to understand that.
Okay. Okay. Other general public comment?
Mayor and Commissioners, I think the word Paul was looking for was transparency. At the last break, I talked to the guys down in the hole. I said, when are you going to replace this thing? Well, it's on the list for next year. And all of a sudden, it's next year, I guess. I think we're trying to accommodate KU and not thinking about all the foot traffic that uses that sidewalk and the vehicle traffic that uses Osdale. Could it not wait till summer when the traffic's down and the foot traffic's minimal?
Go ahead.
That's it.
Oh. Well, I suppose we could wait till it blows up, too.
It blows up all the time, right?
Well, Jim, I think, I think it's wise that we look at it right now.
So, why were the guys told next year?
Which guys?
The guys in the hole, your employees.
Okay, we will talk to those guys, thank you for bringing that up.
All right.
Okay. Any other general public comment? Okay, thank you all. Next item is the regular agenda. Public is allowed to speak on any of the regular agenda items and give any public comment, comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. First item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of the 10-foot utility easement on the south and west sides of Lot B. Have a replat, have a replat of the south half of lots one and two located on 801 North 7th Street, as requested by the property owner, Megan Willison, is that right?
As the mayor mentioned, this is a application for vacation of the easement, this is 801 North 7th Street. The easement sits on the south and west sides of, of the lot. It's hard to see, but if you look more closely, you can see where the garage has an addition already extending into the easement. The owner would like to go ahead and rehabilitate the garage and has asked to vacate the easement area. We've contacted all the utilities, and on the area, you can also see the water and the sewer on North 7th Street, but we've contacted also gas and electric and telephone, and nobody has any facilities in there. We've contacted all the property owners within 200 feet, we've had no comments back, so your actions this evening would be to open the public hearing pending your discussion. Staff would recommend approval of this vacation.
Okay. Questions to Chuck right now?
Nope.
Okay. This time I will open the public hearing on the vacation of the 10-foot utility easement at 801 North 7th Street. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, that passes 3-0. Then are there questions on the vacation itself? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the vacation of the 10-foot utility easement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval of the vacation made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes 3-0. Next item is to receive a presentation on Public Works' annual snow training. Thanks for coming.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Mark Teal with the City Public Works Department. Thank you, KT, for those kind words. Hasn't begun to snow yet, and the city's up one to nothing. All right, I'm going to kind of go through some of these fairly quickly, a lot of it is, is repeat, but I know Commissioner Larson and Commissioner Bowley, some of this may be not necessarily new, but new as Commissioners do you want. Now, these are just some statistics on, on what we get, you'll see a slide here in a minute that shows the 10-year average is down, so I don't know if that's what that necessarily is attributed to, but that average that you see there for 21 inches of snow in Lawrence for a snow season, which typically we run from December, we start, we start tracking before that, but typically it snows here mainly December through March timeframe, but it, it does snow earlier sometimes. This is from our weather partner, Weather &amp; Not, a company out of Kansas City that we partner with to do, help us with forecasting snow events. It's a minimal cost to us, but usually one event, we recoup those costs and savings, not only in manpower, being, not being here when they need to be here, but not being here when they don't need to be here, as well as not wasting materials and so forth, depending on what we're expecting.
I used to think that the years that I was mayor, you know, it was like in 2006 and '07, you know, we get like 1.4 inches, and then I had that off year where we got like 36.4 inches, just wouldn't quit.
Well, my first snow season here was '08 and '09, and then the next year we had 36 inches, so I was beginning to wonder if that was anything related to me coming here or not, but we've been on a downward trend, and I, I, for one, glad of that.
Yeah.
Here's a comparison, this is really a good comparison slide, each year I try to give you a comparison from the previous two years, but this, this particular one is of importance because you can see the impact to our budget when we get a significant amount of snow. The number of events was similar, but the amount of snow that you, you can see there was a lot more. The other thing that's important to, to see from '13, '14 to '14 and '15 is some of the technology that we've started to incorporate into our program. Four years ago, we started to use salt brine, we've also, and you'll see some of these slides here ahead of these, but we've started to use bigger trucks, bigger blades, some wing blades on the side of our trucks, so we've incorporated some efficiencies in our operation. This is an interesting slide, I was talking with Mike Perkins, our street division manager, and as, obviously as a city grows, we know the infrastructure grows out there with it, but sometimes we forget that it impacts our day-to-day lives and our operation for maintenance and for snow removal, but you can see there, just in five years, we've added almost 50 lane miles of plowing, and that's quite a bit if you think about 50 miles of plowing, that's quite a bit of additional plowing that our crews are out there taking care of. Our plan, we're divided into nine areas, we have routes that's changed over the years, this is a, a good number that we've settled on with the equipment that we have on hand and with our operators and training that's available to our people, along with the technology and materials that we use. One, one thing to take away from this slide, I guess, would be that while we have a plan, we focus that not only on arterials, but we look at bus routes, we look at access to our hospitals, access to schools and things like that, major employment centers, make sure that employee, you know, people can get to their jobs. Another critical thing on this slide is that we don't put the blades down until we get about one inch of snow. I think one of the complaints that we typically get from people is that they say it's snowing out, they see the plow, but the blade's not down. Putting the blade down on the pavement does more damage to the pavement than it does benefit us by not trying to push an inch of snow off the road. Typically, the pretreatment that we do to the roads prior to snowing and the salt and sand that we're spreading behind the truck with the blade up do more good on that inch, that, that amount of snow. The other thing is we set our blades, we have offsets because there's obstacles in the road that manhole, some tug manhole stick up, and you've got meter valves and things like that, we can do a significant amount of damage to the infrastructure if we hit those with those blades. Pretreatment plan, this was, I think, one of the great things that, that our department has done to, to the program, it has significantly increased our effectiveness in getting events cleared off sooner. Pretreating is basically, we go out with, with our trucks and we put, you see it out, looks like pinstripe on the pavements. We have the ability to do every lane mile in the city, we don't always do every lane mile, it depends on what the forecast is, some events we do, and, and really, Mike, Mike and I, with the supervisory staff down there, we sit down ahead of any event that's coming into town, we look at the forecast indicators, we look at the temperature, we look at a number of factors, and we actually come up with a game plan for every event. We treat every event as, as a separate game plan, and those often get changed while the game is going on, but, but we do, do work that. One, one element that we have to consider with liquid brine, putting it down, salt basically loses its effectiveness below 15 degrees. Fortunately for us, when it's snowing, temperatures are usually hovering around 28 to 35 degrees, so we're, we're effective there. Where we see the ineffectiveness of that is the next day after snow, where you start to get refreeze and things like that. Just quickly, this is our pretreatment map, when we, when we pre-treat, we, we pre-treat these areas, as I mentioned earlier, we do have the ability to treat the entire 850-some lane miles of pavement, and we have done that at some occasions last year. It takes about 10,000 gallons of salt brine to do, to do the entire community one pass. Plow routes look a little different, if you study those maps, and I flip back and forth real quick, you'd see some subtle differences there, but the impact is different because we can do more when we're treating versus when we're plowing. You know, five-lane roads require more than one truck, and this shows you the slide where I talked about the nine routes that we have, just, it's based on our equipment, our operator experience, and the overall effectiveness, so the bolder colors is what we do first, and then those same operators that are clearing those arterials and collectors then go into the residential areas. Materials that we have on hand, we have plenty of salt, we have plenty of materials ready to go. One of the things that is very fortunate for this community, you all had the wisdom to allow us to utilize the facility that's down there on the bottom left-hand corner, it's one of the vacated facilities from the old farmland plant, it's a bulk warehouse storage facility, required very little improvements to get the roof so that we could make sure it was dry inside, but we have a capacity to store 10,000 tons of salt in there, actually we could put about twice as much of that in there, but that's where we put that salt. It is, I, I can tell you how important it is and how comforting it is to us as operators to know that we have that reserve there. You know, typical winter here, we may use about 5,000 tons of salt, but we have had winters where we've gone above that, and our typical, prior to that acquisition, our typical storage capacity was around 5,000 tons, so we were at the mercy of production from our salt suppliers in February, late January, February, March, and we, we literally get 10 tons, you know, here, another 15 tons here, we don't have to worry about that here. If we have, if we have a winter where we're worrying about running out of salt, I think the, the winter weather's at least of our concerns here. Equipment, we've got some very nice equipment, we've been changing over from single axle dump trucks to tandem dump trucks, they give us a much larger spreader capacity, greater fuel efficiency, while the larger trucks burn at, burn fuel at a higher fuel rate, we have less dead time trips, meaning when the spreaders are empty, coming back to the yard to refill, we almost have double the capacity as a single axle dump truck. The other thing we've started doing with them, as you see on the bottom right corner there, we've added wing blades, typically you would only see those on state DOT type of operations. We have some very skilled people, we do a lot of training with these, this was new to us two years ago, we now have, we have four, four or five trucks that are outfitted with the wing blades. What that does, you'll see a slide here in a minute, that greatly increases our efficiency when we're clearing the five lanes or three-lane roads, we can basically reduce that clearing path by one truck. And also, as we've added those 50 extra lane miles, we get, you know, we can recoup some of those efficiencies there as well. We've got a, you know, this right here is probably the number one thing that makes the snow operation in the city of Lawrence successful. These guys down here, I've been here since 2008, and I can't, I was talking to Mike today, I can't recall one time, not one single snow event in the eight years that I've been here, that any of those guys ever called in and said they can't make it to work when, when we need, when people were asking us to stay home, these guys were coming to work. They're a dedicated group of guys, let me tell you. We do a lot of public awareness, Megan Gililand works, works hard with us, we've developed some great- We've developed some great tools out there with our website, with social media. My wife is telling me about Facebook, and I'm like, I don't know how you do Facebook, but...
[laughing]
I, I feel kind of like I'm getting old, because I'm like, I thought I'd never say I don't like technology, but I do like it, I just, you know, it's, it's just amazing the type, you know, the outreach. We're, we're not just trying to get to one segment of the community. Gentlemen earlier spoke today about diversity in the community. We want to make sure that the public knows what we're doing and how they can help us in those types of things and getting out there. So these are a few of the things that we like to put out there for the public. You know, the biggest thing is for them to be prepared, you know, know what's coming. Don't follow our trucks, allow plenty of time, stay at home, have a safety kit in your, in your car, you know, be, be prepared if you get stuck to be there a while. And then, you know, I think the number-one complaint that we get when we plow is that we, sometimes we close off driveways and we push snow back onto people's sidewalks after they clear. You know, the good news with that is, is that we live in a community where people are diligent enough to get out and clear their sidewalks as quickly as in their driveways as right, right behind the snow. Problem is, we're not, we're not in the residential areas until the last part of our snow operation, and so we, we do, we do, it just, it just happens with snow removal. So if they can wait, I know the city has an ordinance about how soon sidewalks have to be cleared, but it's after the snow subsides, so... And then just be patient. We, we have a plan, and we will work the plan. We do have an operations center. If we get into a situation where we have a major snow event forecasted, we'll man our operations center phones 24 hours a day, so we can hear what's going on. I guess the best encouragement, if somebody has an emergency, though, with, with, related to snow, is don't call us, call 911. Dispatch is the best way to, to get what you need out that way. Don't call them if your driveway's cleared over with snow, but if you have, you know, an access issue, and that's the best way to handle that. Today was our annual snow day. I can't tell you how many of our guys came up to me today and just reminded us, you know, thank you for allowing us to have a day off from patching potholes and putting, fixing curbs and mowing grass, to, to actually spend a day just dedicated to thinking about snow. It's hard to think about it on a day like today, it's a beautiful day out there, but we, these guys spend the morning, they get the equipment out, they load the spreaders, they put the blades on the trucks, they go through all the operations, and they make a list of things that aren't working. I can't imagine doing that 24 hours before we've got a forecast for, for a snow event coming in, and then being in, in that 11th-hour crunch time, trying to get our equipment, you know, ready to go. So it's a huge opportunity for them. We spend some time doing safety training. We, we had a guest speaker come in from Weather or Not today and talk to the guys about weather predictions for this winter and weather forecasting and how we use that tool. And then they spend the afternoon driving around in the community on their routes. It's a lot easier to find those challenges on a day like today than at 2:00 in the morning when it's snowing, so it's, it's just a, a good resource, so I'm glad that we have that opportunity. I guess part of our trainer guys participate in an APWA snow rodeo competition where they can hone their skills. This year, we actually won, took some awards in that competition, so, as I mentioned earlier, we have some really good guys. I talked earlier about the wing plows and some of the things, you know, you can see there, we've get an 80% impact by that additional expense, so it's huge with our budget. Just more on our social media, information out to the public. We have an interactive snow map. Our, our trucks are equipped with GPS tracking devices, but they also have controllers that we can tell when the blade's up or down, or the spreader's on or off. That helps us, because sometimes the guys, you know, at 3:00 in the morning, they've been driving a truck for 10 hours, you know, supervisor says, hey, turn your spreader on. You know, it's, it's just easy to forget to do that, because you can't really tell sometimes. The other thing it does is it kind of shows the public where we've been, so, you know, gives them a sense that, yes, we're out there and we're working on, on the events. Just real quick, the other thing that Megan does with us, you, you won't see this, like on a day like today, you'd, you'd have to dig down through the website to find it. I guess that's a good thing. But if we were forecasting a snow event for tomorrow, this would be, there'd be acknowledgement and a link to this right on the main page, so you go to the city of Lawrence website, and boom, snow operations, be ready, takes you right there. We have, you've heard some information on some of the ITS projects that we have. You know, we use those for traffic mainly, but one of the benefits or offshoots of that is we have an interactive map that we use during snow operations, and you can see there, somebody could go to this map, click on the camera, and see what the condition of the road is, and as we add more cameras, they'll add more visions, visuals to this map. KC Scout in, in Metro Kansas City uses this, and it's very good for people to see kind of what the conditions of the roads, should I stay home, can I go out, is this, is this route clear, is it not clear? The other thing this map shows people, not in real time, because we, we don't want everybody to know exactly where our trucks are, because they like to come out and, and help us out, but...
[laughing]
It does show that, hey, there are, you know, they can see that our trucks are out and, and we are working in the areas. One of the things that we've done is we've sent out some notices and asked people, if you live on a street that's identified here in yellow, if at all possible, don't park on the street. They're narrow streets and helps us with our operation if people have the ability to not park on the streets there. So the, part of the presentation that everybody really wanted to hear about, I think, is the forecast every year, and, you know, my friends ask me about forecasts, and I say, well, I, I know that I can tell you what happened last year, pretty accurately. We use, we use everything that's out there. We have a contracted service, but we use the Weather Channel, Weather Underground, AccuWeather, we look at everything. And I, I go through, my wife one time asked me, why do you have so many weather apps on your phone? Well, you know, it's just part of the game. When you're trying to figure out what's going on, you get a little advantage by knowing a little bit different what everybody's saying, you kind of put all that together. But the three main areas that we look at for forecasting is NOAA. They've been known to be pretty accurate. My father-in-law farmed all of his life, you know, would tell you the Farmer's Almanac is where you go to get your weather information. We, we do look at that, actually. And then Weather or Not, our weather contracted service provides us some information. And I would like to say about the Weather or Not service, you know, like the Weather Channel and Weather Underground, they'll give us a regional type of Northeast Kansas look, because they're, you know, they're market areas, is a large market area. When we talk to Weather or Not folks, they're actually talking to us about the city of Lawrence. They're not talking about Udora, they're not talking about McCompton, we're talking about the city of Lawrence. They actually give us predictions about when it's going to snow at 23rd in Waukesha, when it's going, or Clint Parkway in Waukesha, when it's going to start snowing downtown, those types of things. So that's, that's really helpful for us. Just real quick, you can see, the challenge with Kansas is we're always in the middle. Whether you're driving from California to Carolinas, we're always in the middle, and it just depends on what the jet stream's going to do. The weather service, the NOAA weather service this year is predicting that the temperatures and precipitation are going to be pretty much easy. It's equal, means equal chance of going one way or the other, depending on how hard the cold air comes down from Canada and how hard the Arctic pressure comes up from the Gulf of Mexico and from the Pacific Ocean. And ideally enough, this year, Farmer's Almanac is pretty much on track with NOAA. Oftentimes, that's not the case, it's usually you got to flip a coin which one you want to say you're going to believe in. Fortunately, Kansas is at the bottom of the very snowy, typical winter cold, which means we have a better chance of being, I like to think, in the very wet and chilly versus very snowy and cold. I like wet and chilly versus snowy and cold. So what's it really going to do? I think we're going to have a repeat of what we had last year. I think November is going to continue to be warm, although next week, it's already hotter, that, the, the back end of this week's talking about a little chilly, rainy weather. But I think November and December are going to be pretty dry, pretty mild, temperature-wise. I think, you know, there's always a chance between now and New Year's that we'll have a small event, but our, our weather partners are telling us that we more than likely won't be working on Thanksgiving Day. Hopefully, they will be working the day after on New Hampshire Street.
It would encourage it.
That's encouraging, that's encouraging. And as, as usual, for this, this part of the country, January, February, and March, it's still kind of a ways out yet to predict those, but with what I'm saying as a repeat of last year, we had a couple of events that were forecasted to dump, you know, eight to 10, 12 inches of snow. You know, as much as 48 hours in advance, I think you all remember that, people were panicking, we're going to get a foot of snow. And then as we got 12 hours out, six hours out, you know, what we ended up realizing is that we ended up getting like an inch or two of snow in, in reality. But, you know, if, if the wind blew five miles an hour harder from the north, we could have gotten 12 inches of snow, so... It's tricky to predict those things, but I think we're, we're feeling pretty good that we should have somewhat of a repeat of last year, where we'll have, you know, an average number of events, but a low snow mountain count. So I guess that, that's all I have. I would like to tell you, we're ready. You've got a dedicated group of individuals that work down at the street department, our utilities department, our parks and rec department, our facilities department. I mean, this is a team effort, this is all hands-on deck when we go into snow operation mode. Because it snows here every year, nobody really thinks about it in terms of emergency operations, but, and we don't say that, because we don't want people to panic that, oh, the city's going into emergency operations, because it's going to snow. But we, we operate and we treat those events as a, you know, as a map, just as we would if we had a, a forecast for severe winds and tornado, tornadic action, things like that. So we take those seriously, our guys are equipped, we're ready.
Questions?
You got to flip to the next thing, that's the best part.
Oh, sorry. Chuck told me I had to change my slide.
There it is. Spring is here.
My, my daughter's favorite.
I have a comment to make. I had the opportunity to do a big tour with Mark this last week on their whole facilities, and one thing that sticks out, especially since we're talking about snow, is on slide number 11, which shows your brine system. We, and I didn't realize we make all of our own brine. And if you'll look at that slide, right there in the upper right-hand corner, our guys built that from scratch. We built the whole thing, and I thought that was great use of resources. I was really impressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is kind of a follow-up from what KT was talking about. Tell us about this brick streets equipment that you've got.
Well, we, we certainly appreciate the brick street resource that we have in this community, it's very valuable. But the typical, modern steel plow blade has a carbide bit on it, and it's not very user-friendly for bricks. And so we have equipped one of our blades with a rubberized blade that we use when we plow brick streets now. Much more friendly to bricks.
How many miles of brick street do we have?
I think we have approximately 23 lane miles of brick streets.
That's great. So considering, as you said, the valuable resource that it's there, you start pulling up bricks, it's not a pretty sight, so...
Well, and like I mentioned about manholes and water valves, you know, anything that we damage when we're clearing snow is just more work for us that we wouldn't have needed, that we shouldn't have needed to have to do, so... Our guys are smart, they figure things out.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mark, I, you know, it goes without saying, you know, we all appreciate the work that you and Mike and, and Chuck are making sure that this gets done. I remember, you know, I think I say this every year too, it seems like when I was a kid, you know, that we kind of get out and maybe do the main, the main roadways the best we could, and, you know, because we just didn't have the equipment then, I supposed to do a number of those things. But, you know, today that, you know, over the last 30 years, I think that we have made investments, we make good investments, make sure that people are able to get to work, get to school, do all the things that they need to do, and then we realize, you know, this day and time, you know, you shut down, you know, for snow, I mean, the economic, the economic loss in a community like ours is, is pretty, pretty big. And so getting out, getting the town back up into business, I mean, you know, it, it works out very well, so I appreciate all the work that you do there. Wouldn't be right without going and saying, you know, at this time, you know, we, I think it was yesterday, Diane, you notified us that I lost our former Public Works Director, George Williams, and, and, you know, I had, I had the opportunity, as many people did, of being able to serve on the commission when George was Public Works Director, and, you know, way back when. You know, it was, it was something to be able to see the amount of work that was done with the equipment that we had, and, you know, and we did a lot of work, but, you know, you know, our special thoughts go to Ms. Williams and the entire Williams family. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's something to see how we have improved over time and, and realize that those lane miles, I, I think when I first started, it was about 400 miles, we kind of, kind of grew up. But, you know, it, it takes a lot to make sure that we're able to get people out and going, so, anyway, thank you, thanks to all your staff, so... Anyway, public comment? Anybody? Okay. Well, thanks for coming. Again, do you need, just received the presentation tonight? Formal action?
No formal action.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, I guess... Item number three, do we do that at this point, or do we...
I would suggest at the end of the, very end of the meeting.
I was going to say, we're about to adjourn.
We struggled to actually work that on there for him.
We're going to go home. No, we're not going to adjourn. Yeah, okay. Future agenda items, Diane?
Yes. As you can see, a number of meetings are, are coming up and kind of getting set here. So we have the meeting next week, where we'll have several items, employee longevity payments for you to consider, the 2016 legislative priority statement to get your feedback on, on that as we look ahead at the next legislative year, the Horizon 2020 Issue Action Report, the Taste and Odor Improvements, and a project briefing to set the bid date on that project, and then the transportation alternatives, KDOT grant applications we'll have for you to consider, and then a request for neighborhood stabilization income funds. So those are the items we know of at this point.
Okay. Any questions on those?
No.
All right. It's not bringing a sleeping bag, but it's getting close.
Yeah.
Commission items? Do you guys have any info?
Well, I had an opportunity to go back out to the compost facility on East 11th Street, I think it is, and the folks out there, Carl showed me how the screener works. That's the second piece of big machinery I've been able to see out there, and it's really great to see them working. Michelle and Gina were there too, Kathy was there for a little bit, but I really appreciate the hospitality, and, you know, the work they do is really interesting and provides a wonderful alternative to tipping fees for all the yard waste, and you get to reuse it, and they've got a big pile of compost out there. We need to figure out what to do with, so, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to figure that out.
Excuse me.
Bush? Okay.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. There's no more space.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything particular to highlight right here, we just have a number of items that are listed, so...
Okay. A number of things. Okay. Yep. If there's no other calendar items, then I would, the next item on the agenda is we need to recess the November 3rd meeting, so we can go into executive session on Sunday morning. So, anyway, again, you want me to read off all of this thing?
I, you, just the...
Or just the motion?
Just the motion will be fine, ma'am.
Anybody have any questions on what we're going to be doing? All right. Just checking, I'm just extending this out. You know... You know, I can't believe my wife's going to question why I'm home at, you know, 7:00.
It's like that ballgame wasn't long enough.
Well, remember last week, you know, we went home, and I thought, "Oh, man, I missed the whole game, and I got to see eight innings of the game." But I haven't, you know, I don't think I slept for a week.
Right.
It was great.
Needed that hour we got back.
Oh, I know, I know. So, okay, if there are no questions, then I would entertain a motion to recess this meeting until 8:30 a.m. on Sunday, November 8, 2015, at which time, City Commission will reconvene into executive session for the purpose of discussion of non-elected personnel matters and resume its regular meeting at 5:30 p.m. November 8, 2015, in the City Commission Room to adjourn the meeting. That's what will be done.
So, moved.
Second.
A motion made in second to recess this meeting, with all the things that went along with it, by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Larson, all in favor of that motion to recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We are in recess. No gavel time this time? Okay. Thank you all.